Call order, the city council work session for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, October 27, 2020. City Clerk, please call. Roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Merkleston?
Here.
Council Vice President Jack Gassel?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Futter?
Here.
Dale Helm?
Here.
Tim Rea-Coll?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Mars?
Present.
Desert interim quorum. I'm going to change the agenda a little bit here to allow somebody to move up on the agenda. Number six is going to move above number three, so we're going to do one, two, six, and three, four, five, just so everybody's following along. So, move on. Number one, updated MINDOT local partnership program. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. So after our discussions at the October 13th work session in regards to the crosswalks on Demers, and you know, we had discussion regards to adding pigment for color and stuff, I did follow up with MINDOT, and we've had further discussion. I did find out as part of the traffic signal replacement project in 2024, they're also looking at making some ADA improvements. At a minimum, I know they're doing some ADA improvements at second and fourth, and maybe, you know, some of the other locations too, but the one concern that MINDOT has is, you know, with some of the changes, you know, they may make with curb cut locations, ramp locations, that if we were to do a colored concrete, you know, the crosswalk may not line up with the new curb cuts and stuff. So, in our discussions, kind of what their recommendation was that, you know, maybe we proceed with our project kind of as originally scoped out, which would be just regular, we just replace the stamped crosswalks with regular concrete, and then just provide, you know, regular, you know, white block style striping, and then potentially look at in 2024 with the MINDOT project, and we'd have to look at probably applying for some funding or whatever, but look at at that time, doing that like that thermoplastic pavement markings, which I think the mayor even alluded to it last time. I mean, with those type of pavement markings, I mean, we could even get something that would kind of look like the stamped crosswalks that we have down there right now. So, I think right now, that probably is, you know, maybe our best direction, because as we all know, we need to do something down there by next year. I mean, those cross, existing crosswalks are really tough shape. Some of those Batum Minus areas coming off the Sorley Bridge, you know, need to be overlaid. And, I mean, as we all know too, that sidewalk that runs kind of just on the west side of Fourth or Business Highway Two there is really tough shape. So, again, I don't know that we could wait four years to do anything, so I guess what I'm kind of recommending with your approval is just kind of move ahead with the project as planned. Just do the, you know, regular striping for now, and then we try to, you know, make some beautification improvements in 2024 with the MINDOT project. So, I guess with that, if you have any questions for me, we can open it up for questions.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Emery? I see none, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to number two, considered 2020 ADA improvement project. Mr. Emery.
Thank you again, Mr. President. As you're all aware, this past summer in June, we had received quotes for some ADA improvement work, which was quite a few curb ramps around the New Heights School. We had some new sidewalk work by the flood wall on River Road. And then also on Third Avenue Northwest, just kind of north of Highway Two there, we were going to do some sidewalk, bus shelter, pad installation. And as you recall, the bids came in higher than we anticipated, so that project, the bids were rejected. We are, and we did get approval for that, but we are putting in that bus shelter pad and just a little bit of sidewalk work there this fall. Other than that, so basically what we're looking at doing is getting that project ready to go out for bids early winter here, just to, you know, get better pricing this go around. And then also this summer, when Jason was doing that street panel replacement on the flood wall there, kind of by the green site on Second Avenue, we were approached by options about doing some ADA improvement work in that area. So, you know, we had told them that we would look at that as part of our 2021 project. So, so again, basically the 2021 project would include, you know, the work from, that wasn't done this year, along with the addition of that work between the Louis Murray Bridge and the flood wall. Basically, this, you know, this ADA work, you know, as city and staff, you know, we've kind of committed to trying to pick away at this ADA work, because we had that ADA transition plan that was done here a few years ago, and, you know, we need to show progress on that, you know, so we don't jeopardize any future funding through, whether it's federal MINDOT, federal funding or MINDOT funding. So, I guess what I'm looking for at this time is just kind of authorization from you to, you know, prepare plans and specs for the 2021 ADA improvement project.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Right, move on to number six, discussion of utility infrastructure replacement, major street reconstruction or replacement. Start off with Mayor Gander.
All right. Well, thank you for having this on the agenda for us to take a look at. As we're getting closer into the possibility of major reconstruction or replacement of the streets on 20th Street and Fifth Avenue, more things are coming to mind of things that we ought to be paying attention to. And we started to take a look at the utilities under that street, and we do have an tentative okay, a tentative okay from Water and Light, that they could take the water main portion of this project and move it into 2021 if we were able to move the project in that timeframe. They have always scheduled water main replacement throughout the city according to the priorities of when they're going to fail, or, you know, the age of the asset that's under the ground there. And this one could rise to the top and get into the 2021 construction cycle if the project were to go forward. But as you look at it under there, we also have some storm sewer, and we also have some sanitary sewer, and the age of those materials are close to 50 years. Anywhere from 47 to 50 years, some of it was put in in phases, and it looks like we do have at least a partial failure of some storm sewer in there along Fifth. And so, it doesn't make a lot of sense in my estimation to put a brand new or major reconstructed street over 50-year-old storm sewer that's already starting to fail, 50-year-old sanitary sewer. And yet, the other part of that is if you go to the residents there and say, oh, and by the way, you're going to include that in your project at your cost, starts to feel like an unfunded mandate onto our residents. And so, I'm just raising the question to whether we could maybe clarify our street replacement policy and how we want to do it, not only in this case, but in every single case going forward. Typically, storm sewer and sanitary sewer are 100% assessed to the adjacent property owners, special assessments. However, there have been times where we'll fix little areas of failure using our funds that we have citywide. And there is at least one big project that was done in 2008 where storm sewer, sanitary sewer, all pavement, and water main were picked up 100% by the city outside of any special assessments to the local residents. So, it's been a little bit of a hodgepodge of how we've done it, and we'd just like to see what the council would prefer if there would be any consideration. So, so far, as you probably know, I said it a moment ago, when projects like this go through, the Water and Light puts in all, you know, all the excavation necessary, replaces water main, puts the fill, puts the compaction, puts the pavement over the top, and that is done through the Water and Light Department. Again, it's been very different on storm sewer, and the hope would be to try to maybe reconcile those to some extent, that perhaps the storm sewer, sanitary sewer could go in, and all the compacted material, and then the pavement section over the top of that. And so, we limit our exposure a little bit because it's a new thing, and we don't know quite how it's going to go. Perhaps each of those two elements could be looked at, say, the pavement portion, up to 10% of project, for storm sewer, up to 10% of project for sanitary sewer. And we do have some ideas of funding sources, and all of that is for us to decide as to where would the funds come from if we're willing to do this. The funds for the water main could come from a slightly different source, excuse me, from the storm and sanitary sewer, could come from a different source, the pavement could come from another. According to Steve Emery, it wouldn't be out of line for storm sewer replacement, occasionally replaced, specially assessed. So, there we go to the bottom portion. We could use enterprise funds to pay for the actual sanitary sewer and storm sewer, and maybe some state aid maintenance funds for that 10% of pavement over the top. We're limited to how we could use the enterprise funds, probably cannot put that into the pavement portion of it, but we could tap into these other funds, or other sources that yet to identify. It would be a good thing to have this fleshed out, a good thing to have it decided, so that when we bring back a proposal to the residents, they will have some clarity on this item. So, I think the two things for us to discuss and decide, A, do we want to require that storm sewer, sanitary sewer, under new or major reconstructed pavement, would be replaced if it's over a certain age? Do we want to set that as a policy? If so, what is the age? 40, 45, 50 years? To me, that's a reasonable range. And again, it's, you take up a new street two, three years later for a failure, and it looks like bad planning. And I say that's shame on us. And probably we can do better. We can anticipate a failure on a 50-year-old infrastructure and say, you know what, let's just put that in with a major street reconstruction or street replacement. And then we know. Why? You know, storm sewer, when it fails, it causes street failure. You got water coming along the curb, goes down and gets out of that storm sewer, you know, heavy ground moisture right there freezes and pops up your pavement. When sanitary sewer fails, you have groundwater getting into your sanitary sewer, running up your volumes at heavy soil concentration, soil saturation. So, now your flows into our interconnect are high, or they shut us off during high water times, and that's a problem for us. And of course, a lot of that can lead to some backup into people's homes with sanitary sewer. And so, really, the ability to anticipate these failures and plan ahead for them can prevent a lot of big problems for us down the road. So, the question of do we want to require this infrastructure to go in new, if it's over a certain age, on a major street reconstruction or replacement? And then, secondly, the funding mechanism, are we willing to spread that out in some way to a citywide cost, or does it have to go against the special assessments to the residents? I could see that portion being picked up by other funds. I guess I would prefer that, because it is a requirement that we would be putting into those developments, and it just feels like it would be more in line with what Water and Light is doing if we did it that way. If we can, if we can identify the funding for it, and Mr. Olston had a concern, he and I have discussed it, okay, we do this, maybe we can do it now, would we be able to do it again in one year, or five years, or 10 years? The next time we do one of these, can we identify those funds without, without really burdening our people excessively? And it's a valid concern. And probably there are some other ones, but that's what I know. And probably it's a good time for either Jason or Steve to weigh in, because they're the experts in the area.
So, and again, Council, I get, you know, what we're really looking at is trying to make these projects, you know, I guess affordable for the residents, because I mean, as we've always talked, when it comes to special assessments, you know, we got to be able to pass what they call, again, the special benefit test. And I think by, you know, funds from some of these other pots of money, I think if we do that, you know, hopefully then we can, you know, get these projects in line and have just less issues in the future too with people wanting to, you know, appeal the project cost and what those special assessments are. So, I guess it's something we've kind of been, you know, as a group, which was the mayor and Jason and I, just kind of been looking at some different options. And right now, this just felt like, you know, a good solution that, you know, we thought we'd bring forward, and I guess see what your guys' thought are. And again, like we said, I think at this point, if this is the direction we'd go, we'd look at revising our assessment policies. So, anything going forward, we're treating everything, you know, all future projects, we're treating them the same as this one, so.
I have a question. So, where, can you tell us exactly where all of our 40 to 50-year-old storm and sanitary sewer is in East Grand Forks? So, if I go back, and I was thinking about this the other day, so, the last time I can remember a big area being done that way was Stells Park, or the area around Stells Park, and that was almost 50, will be 50 years here in about three years, if I remember right.
Yeah.
So, and have we had replacement of sanitary and storm in all those areas except for new construction that, you know, that has been old homes being knocked down, new ones being built and put in there? Because if that's the case, that is a, that area right there would be the next area of town in my mind that we would need to go through and redo streets, because I would assume that's the area that's the oldest, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong.
Yeah, and pretty much, we have infrastructure maps, Chad, that, you know, pretty much show us the year of all of the, all of the infrastructure. So, yeah, I mean, that is something we could definitely look at.
Of course, this one starts with a failed street. I mean, that's what, that's where this one starts. If you have a good street over the top, you know, then it's a little bit different. This is a case where you've got the top off, or exposed, that's probably the time to do it.
We have talked about as a group too, maybe not for this discussion right now, but in the last few years about putting together a process of replacing some of the old sanitary sewer and storm sewer, in a way similar to what Water and Light does too. They take some of the oldest stuff, or different criteria make, make different sewers more attractive to replace, and then maybe replace so many feet per year. But like the mayor alluded to, this particular one would, would be done because the street's being done. But it would be nice to have a program in place to just start slowly replacing those sewers. We were, you know, it's unfortunate the flood, but we're fortunate in some ways that some of the older areas of town were the ones that were, were removed. So, a lot of that really old storm and sanitary infrastructure is no longer around. But now it's time, you know, it's been 20-some years now, and it's, it's time to start looking at some of the other stuff. And, and kind of like Steve said there, a lot of the older stuff would be kind of in the northeast end of town, so that would be probably, most likely our focal point on, on doing that, if we proceed with a plan like that in the future.
Any questions?
No.
Clarence?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're already doing that. I think when we do a major street project, at least in my experience, we are looking at the infrastructure under the road. And if the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer, the water lines, if they need replacing, they are being replaced at the same time that the road is being done. It's nothing that we haven't done in the past. So, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with the process that we're doing to evaluate a storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and say, hey, it's 50 years old, it's time to replace it. As long as it's working fine, I don't see replacing it. We're doing our due diligence and, and running the cameras down a certain section of our lines every year, and that's telling us if we have some bad spots that we need to fix. And when the major road constructions do go in, like I said, we are evaluating that infrastructure, determining if we need to replace it at that time. And that's working for us. I don't see that we need to do any change. If the citizens on 20th want to redo the road, then yes, that would be a good time to, let's look at that infrastructure, and if it needs replacing, let's replace it. If they don't want to do the road, as long as the systems on there aren't failing, then we don't need to replace them either. My opinion, we don't need to change anything.
Jason, one's lot. Did you guys televise those, that area on 20th and 5th?
Yeah, we just, we just televised it recently here, and it would be, storm and sanitary both would be, would be in need of replacement. There isn't much sanitary there. It just crosses 20th Street in one area, and then there's a little bit to the west end of 20th too. There's probably more storm sewer under than anything. And, and that too, there's, there's voids in there, there's separations in pipe. There's some work regardless if we replace the street or not, that we're going to have to do at the intersection of Fifth and 20th, and possibly even south of there. We're still just reviewing some of the televising, and we've had some issues with sinkholes there, that there was issues with storm sewer, and we have some issues with some manholes and stuff being, you know, the ground around it, either settling or pushing up, and, and we've seen why now. So, they're all pretty good candidates to replace. And I guess we'll have to just prioritize, if we don't replace the street, then we'll just have to prioritize when we do them, and what, you know, what, what kind of treatment, how we're going to replace it too, so.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor said, you know, you drive down Demers Avenue in Grand Forks, and they spent how many millions of dollars on that street, and they got to tear up in about three spots fixing things now? I don't know what they're doing, maybe something else, but it just, you know, to the citizens and stuff, it just doesn't look good. And this question for, and either Jason or Steve could probably answer this for me. The mayor was talking 40 to 50 years. Do you have any guesstimate on how long one of these things should last, or when we should be looking at them? I mean, will they go that long without any problem?
Yeah, I, I think that 40 to 50 years is kind of your expected lifespan of those utilities. I mean, like anything else, I mean, you might get more years, or you might get less, but I think 40 to 50 years is kind of a good timeframe when you really should start looking at replacing it. And one thing even, you know, Jason and I have even talked about is, again, if, if a utility project is not driven by street replacement, if the street is good, you know, with the sanitary, maybe even the storm, you know, we can look at relining those sewers too, if they're in good enough shape to reline them, and there's not major dips or anything like that. But, you know, in the case of Fifth and 20th, we got, you know, a failing street. So, in that case, it's, you know, more cost feasible to actually just like at replacing them as opposed to relining them, so.
I have one more question. And I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what the answer is on it, but that's why I want to ask it. Why do we put them under the street? Why don't we put them in the berm? Is there a reason? I mean, is there any special deal for that, or? Then we wouldn't have to tear up the streets every time.
Yeah. Some of it is, you know, we just don't have room, I guess, in the berms to get everything in, you know, because, you know, as per requirements too from Minnesota Department of Health, I mean, we got a certain separation criteria that we got to meet, you know. Water main's got to be a minimum of 10 feet away from, you know, sanitary sewer or storm sewer. So, again, just to try to get all those utilities in the berm is often, you know, difficult. And nowadays too, with all the other private utilities, you know, it's just tough to fit everything into, you know, typically, you probably have anywhere from 15 to 20-foot berm there from the back of curb to the property line. And there's just, you know, there's just not room to fit everything in that 15 to 20 feet either.
And there were, there was at least one place, sorry, where it had to cross the street, you know, so it isn't running parallel to the street, but it had to cross the street. And then, of course, storm sewer has to be at the curb line to pick up water in the catch basin, so it's going to be right there no matter what. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, a lot of the sanitary runs down the center of the street, you know, 20th is a little bit different that way, where it does just run across the street, and it's in backyards back there, and an easement is the, is the main. But if you have it on one side of the street or the other too, there gets to be an issue with homeowners, because they're responsible with their service line, to pay for their service line and the connection to the sewer main. So, if one person has to run theirs under the street, you know, one side of the street, all those residents have to run under the street, and they have an issue, now they're, they have a longer sewer line, so it's not really fair to them that they have to replace, you know, a sewer line that might be almost twice as long, plus they have to tear up the street and pay for the cost of the street, where the other homeowner would have a shorter line and does not have to pay for any of that cost. So, that's just, just one of the other things.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I got. I was just asking, just checking.
Maybe I'll, you know, the mayor and I talked about this, and the questions he alluded to that I had, you know, let's say we are using these enterprise funds and state aid maintenance funds, and we have other projects that we've earmarked for state aid funds or enterprise funds. I mean, how are we going to project out these changes in the policy that's presented to allow us to have enough funding in that? And how far out do we have to project? No, we can't. Is it five years? Is it six years to replenish these funds? And since we have all these other projects that we need to look at and keep track of, you know, across the city with state aid funds, and we always talk about, well, we have, we can use state aid funds to do this or do that. That's just, maybe can you kind of explain to me what, with the enterprise funds, how would that be replenished, and how fast would we replenish if we did this project this way? And also, the state aid fund, how are we going to say, we're going to put it to this project, and then we have to look at other projects to do, and all of a sudden, we're, you know, basically doing a backdoor and putting money back onto the levy for the whole city? So, I maybe kind of explain those two different funds, that how quickly they get replenished, and how, where those funds would be utilized, so.
I guess I can start on the kind of the state aid funds. So, so every year in January, the city does receive state aid maintenance dollars. And 25% of our total allocation goes to state aid maintenance funds, which the city, you know, just receives those funds to use, you know, kind of within the city on Eva Local Streets. And then we do get stated allocation dollars every year that, you know, have to be used on our state aid system. We have put together kind of a spreadsheet of, you know, what we have for stated allocation dollars and state aid maintenance funds, and, you know, what projects we anticipate using those funds for in the next five to six years. I mean, at this time, we haven't included Fifth and 20th, but we, we do have some, a couple spreadsheets where we are kind of tracking those dollars and, you know, what projects they're going to, just so we, you know, we can make sure that we do have sufficient funds in those two accounts, basically. I guess as far as the enterprise funds, I'll let either Jason or, I don't know if Carl is on the phone, or David, I'll let those guys speak to those funds.
As far as the enterprise funds, I guess, short answer is, I'm not sure exactly how we plan for it. There's other cities that do things this way, and we'd have to look into it a little further as we move forward, if this is the way the council direction is, is, is to go forward and, and get some information from other communities on how, how they budget for long-term projects or replacement, let's say annually, or biannually, or something of a certain amount of linear fetus of, whether it be sanitary or storm, and then go from there. So, I guess I don't have a great answer how we, how we figure out how much money would be needed, but there'd be, have to be a lot of future planning and look forward and say, okay, which, which, how much are we going to, how much money are we going to put? towards it? You know, are we gonna do, you know, 5,000 linear feet this year or 1,000 or, or what's gonna be our policy? Like we do our sewer cleaning a fifth of the city each year and we put enough money, make sure we have enough money in our fund to do that. And so, yeah, I guess that's, we, we'd have to get further information on how we wanted to go about that.
Our city's water and light department and Steve probably can explain this a little bit better too, but they set aside approximately $500,000 a year to replace water, water pipes. Steve probably can talk about that, but they do budget that in and where our funds are now with the storm water and the sewage, we would have to look at increasing our fees and like Jason said, we'd have to decide how much we're gonna do and how much we're gonna increase the fees according to how much we want to do each year.
So right now, as we sit, with the enterprise funds, basically we would have to find a funding source to make up the cost of doing these projects, so that would incur a, a increase in fees with our, on our water and light bill. Is that what you're saying, Carla?
That is correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could, or is, are you done? Sorry.
I am done, I have another thought, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I looked at this and as, you know, most people are aware, I've been a pretty big proponent of treating our streets like an enterprise fund, looking at it not from the proper, or the special assessment vantage point, but actually, you know, trying to do what water and light has done, what our other enterprise funds have done for their respective utilities. When I look at this though, what I feel is that this is, this is just, and I've also been in favor of trying to coordinate projects to save money, time, so we don't have to redo projects, come in, have an area torn up over and over again. But what I think this proposal, I guess, even as it sits right now, looks to me as it's kind of the worst of both of those. It's basically trying to fund a street project by tapping into enterprise funds that have a specific purpose, a specific rate structure to fund those things in lieu of putting out special assessments. I understand that that's a goal that we have, but you can't do one thing and call it another and, and just think the ma, the money's gonna magically appear. I think Mr. or the president is right to go down the, that line of questioning of, well, if this is gonna be the policy, what's gonna be the impact on the various enterprise funds? Which, like I said, I'm fine with it. If we want to make the stormwater enterprise fund, a stormwater and street enterprise fund and we fund things through that, let's do that, but let's not pretend that we're, we're gonna fund or cut rates for people doing special assessments, just tap into a fund without any increases to those fund rates. Just looking at the specific project on 20th, I think Mr. Stewart, I kind of pointed it out, the, the water line that goes through there won't really affect the street at all. So that might be just a coordination issue. The, the sanitary sewer is pretty much all in the backyards, it crosses 20th in one space. And my information on the storm is kind of incomplete, but I mean, really, it doesn't look like there's a, I mean, there's a lot of backyard storm in there as well, but, but like I said, as far as the main line, but like I said, I just, if we're gonna do something like this, let's do it. If, don't try to get too cute by half, because it ends up just costing everybody else, because we, we start, you know, changing the policy, we start, you know, misapplying things. Like I said, this, this project, I don't know how much it's actually even gonna help to do this type of thing. And then you're gonna get to other areas of town and it's gonna be a big, big change, but that's, that's just my, my thoughts right now.
What made us even start down this road was as we were starting to go to the next step in getting back to the community with a, a partial reconstruction, we got word from Jason that they had discovered some problems with the storm sewer. And those problems were significant and would be expensive and would need to be reckoned with as part of this project because it impacts the street project, including the curb gutter sections, all of it. And, and that's what really caused us to stop and sit, sit back and say, is this really the time to take a bigger look at this project? And if, if we have a failure of storm sewer on a pretty good sized area, it's all about the same age, all through the whole area, maybe it's time to look at replacing all of it. And it would be a hard thing to throw that back on the residents of that neighborhood, especially coming from top down and telling them, yeah, you're gonna do this also. So that's what really led us into this whole line of consideration. If we did just the more limited replacement and repair of the storm sewer, it's my understanding, Jason, that that would be picked up by city funds, would not be assessed, the scope of that project. But once again, it's all the same age, it's starting to fail, okay? You're, you're throwing good money after bad if you don't take a bigger scoop and fix the problem. But Jason, by all means, to the scope of what you see there, that would be paid for, city not specially assessed?
That's correct. If, if we went ahead and if the street doesn't get replaced, like I said a little earlier, we'll, we'll still have to replace some storm sewer in the intersection of 20th and 5th. To what extent, not sure yet, but there'll be, there'll be some repairs there and there'll be some repairs a little bit further on 5th, a little bit further south. That'll be taken care of on of enterprise funds.
And it's all the same age and it's, it's unstable soils, so that's what you have there.
I think one of the things, my other thought, if we're gonna have to look at rates, I think maybe we need to look at that even more before we even think about what we're doing, because, I mean, if we look at that and find out the rates are gonna, you know, increase by whatever percent, that, that's a big deal. And with that, how do we say, okay, we're, we're looking at the rate increase for this project, but how do we look at it as a whole going forward and say, well, we need to be at this rate to make sure we have funds moving down the road every year or every five years or every 10 years, whatever it may be? So I think that's, that's an unknown and that's gonna be hard to plan for, but I think setting the rate at, for a project to get that done, you know, we might be selling ourselves short down the road, we don't know. And I, I think that's one of the biggest things that are known that's tough to even, you know, project. And I think we need to really look at that. I mean, what do we, with this portion of what we want to use the enterprise funds for, what is the dollar amount? Is it 200,000? Is it 300,000?
About 250, from, from the enterprise fund, about 250,000.
So I mean, how do we?
Does that match up with you, Steve Emery?
Yeah, I'm just looking, it looked like as far as storm sewer costs, we're at about 200 and roughly 213,000. And as far as sanitary sewer?
38, change.
About 60, 63,000.
Although you had in an email, October 19th, 2020, sanitary sewer enterprise funds, 38,563.
Yeah, and I, after our last meeting, I did update those and kind of sent you a summary of the project costs.
Okay, so what's the new total for the two?
So for storm sewer costs, we had approximately 213,000. For sanitary sewer, we're at about 63,000.
All right.
So let's say we're at that dollar amount for this project and we look at a different project down the road and find out that the cost's gonna be totally, let's say they're $500,000 because it's a lot bigger project, bigger problems, I mean, I mean, we're gonna have to go back and adjust the rates again? I mean, that's, how do we do that? You know, and it's something that's, you know, how do we predict that?
I think one way to handle that might be to allocate, as Jason said, so much per year for this purpose. And if you had the bigger project that was proposed, you'd have to say, okay, that's a three-year allocation to get to that bigger project. It all has to stack up and wait. If that's our number one priority to get to that dollar amount, it's a three-year allocation or whatever it may be to hit that dollar amount. But we would, I think it would require that we, on an annual basis, set aside a certain dollar amount and either use it according to the priorities that we've established or save it up for other, connecting it to other projects.
So let's say that we use $250,000 for, or 270, whatever the dollar amount is, this year, are we gonna have to set the rates to make up for this dollar amount we used and then plus project? So you're bumping it up to project the costs over so many years. So are we gonna replace that 250 or whatever the dollar, 275, whatever it is from that enterprise fund and then try to?
Or do we do a special assessment of 50 and pay the rest out of the fund?
The specials will be still right up there, so.
But that's, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, is that we can pay it out of there and we have to replace it, because are we gonna set a limit where we say, oh, we have to have this dollar amount in enterprise funds all the time, plus the increase of what we're charging our citizens across the city?
So, hear me loud and clear on, on my end of it, I'm raising the question, do we want to pull out those items and find a funding source? And enterprise funds is, is one way to do it. And, you know, state aid maintenance funds, there may be other ways, you know, there may be other sources, but whatever we do, absolutely what you're saying is true, you'd have to cover that cost as well as begin to set aside annually to replenish. You know, you could just say, we're not ready to do another one of these for a couple of years until we replenish that and then build up that surplus again. We can control how much goes out of it and how much goes in.
I just want to have discussion of the reality of how we're gonna do this, because I mean, I'm not grandstanding against you to say we're not gonna do anything, but I want to make sure that we, we all walk through and think, what are really the true budgetary impacts that are gonna be back on our citizens? You know, as we spoke earlier, that was my main thing with you, is, okay, how are we gonna do this?
So after this conversation, we can have our financial people go back and say, here's how it could be done, right? If we were gonna do this project in the year 2021, it would go like this and the fund balance is currently this, it would go to that, we'd start to replenish at a certain rate. If, if we decide we are favorable toward this, then we would put our people to work on showing us how they would maintain that fund in this environment. Or we could find another funding source, or we could say we're not doing it. But I just, I wanted us to have this conversation, it would be my preference that these items could be replaced. I, I have come to believe they will fail, they're starting to fail, you know, you look at, just visualize storm sewer under pavement, you have a failure here, you have a failure here, and the whole network in that area is the same age on unstable soil. And, and for all we know, the way that that street frost boiled through there, what is that? You know, where did that, is it all just groundwater? Where did that come from? So we don't know. I mean, we had a ridiculous frost boil on that street on 20th, worse than I've ever seen.
They're over there fixing it right now.
Good.
As we talk.
Good. So, where's that water coming from?
Mr. Murphy, do you have something, sir?
Uh, yes, I guess I just wanted to add a little bit as far as my experience with how I've seen other cities handles some situations like this where money is being used from an enterprise fund. Typically what, what I've seen happen is, they say the, the amount that is collected each year is, or the rates are set at, at a number that they feel is acceptable and realistic and feasible and the, and then the amount of money that that generates is put into the fund each year, depending on how often that they do the, the projects, then they would look at, you know, how much money they have available and potentially scale that project accordingly. You know, meaning that what I've seen between, what they'll do is for this, between the, the enterprise funds, what they feel that they can assess and what the city has put into it, they'll say, you know, that we can probably do a, like say, a $1.5 million project this year. They look at the area that's the most in need and they try to you, see what, how far they can get in that particular troubled area to best utilize those dollars. So it, they start from the endpoint as far as how much they have to spend and how much they've been able to assess and, and then work the project from there to try to do the greatest good. That's just been my experience in, in, with, with some other communities have done.
May I chime in?
Go listen.
Thank you. I agree with David. The other thing that I think that we're just not discussing here, and I think it's for another day, is how to make sure that all of this fits in with the legal parameters that are required by statute. I think that regarding the storm sewers and waterworks, you know, there's specifically statutes that control how we can, uh, collect these enterprise funds for sewer, water, sanitary. And I've been looking into it, but it's a, a much more in-depth discussion that we're going, than we're going to today. And I think that it should be a global discussion regarding our entire, uh, uh, system, including the special assessments. And, and though we can talk about financing and how this money's gonna be collected and what we can afford, there's other requirements statutorily on how we make those determinations. And I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else have any questions or?
We'll probably have this.
Which way do you want to go?
We'll probably have this conversation again at a council meeting, maybe even this Tuesday, if it's something we could act on. Between now and then, could we please take a look at these funds that are out there as far as the enterprise funds that we would have available now? And then consider if we did a project like this, even every, you know, what would be a reasonable expenditure on an annual basis? Is this two years' worth of that? Is this three years' worth of that? And make some projections on how it would affect our, our folks' utility bills, you know, how many utility customers we have? We want to be right out in the daylight on all of this. I know Mr. Vedder would like to see the reverse, that fees come off the utility bills and go toward the general fund. I get that. And, and yet, when you're talking about sewer infrastructure, it makes some sense to have that carry also with the utility bill. So, that's a worthwhile conversation. So between now and Tuesday, could we get a summary of where those fund balances are? And if we did this, say this would be an allocation for three years or two years, how would that affect individual utility bills for our residents? We'd want that news to be right out there as part of this conversation.
You mean in the next work session or?
Or, we'll talk about it, we can talk at a council meeting, right? Is there a law?
Work session would be two weeks from today.
Well, I, I, can I, I, I would like to, to enter into the conversation with your group so that we can actually plan this, because next Tuesday seems a little bit quick to be determining where you're gonna come up with the funding.
Meeting's next Wednesday anyway.
Next Wednesday. We can come back to a work session, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We're really tight and I, that's nobody's fault. We're just really, really tight on if this project is to be built in the summer of 2021. And if we're gonna bid it through the winter, then you're gonna want to go through all of the front-end stuff, the petition coming out of the neighborhood and they need to know costs approximately to, to, do I want to sign that petition or not? And so the way this thing's stacked- And so the way this thing stacks up every week right now is important. But we'll do it right and we'll do it legally, Ron. We won't try to give you any headaches.
Well, I'm sure we will. I just want to be a part of the conversation because I'm just kind of getting into this now.
Yep.
When it came to the proposal that was in the packet. And I had a few questions and maybe we can sit down with Steve and Jason and you and kind of go through some of the funding mechanisms that we have available and what we're actually thinking and how we're doing it now. Because I don't have all those answers at my fingertips and I was asking those questions today at staff, but it was a little bit out of place to be doing it in that general staff meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, let's do it. Let's get busy in the next two weeks and come back and talk about it again.
So would this be looking at for residential and commercial, how are we going to differentiate that? Are we going to have same increases or what are we doing?
Part of the conversation.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything then? All right.
I'd like to say something, but I won't.
All right, we'll talk about it in the next work session. All right, we'll move on to now number three that was, we went over, Campbell Library update. Charlotte Hudson.
Good evening. I sent a list of interesting topics about the library at the last work session that you could just review. And I want to update you on that and let you know what the future plan is for the library. The library board will meet tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., so they will have a chance to get any feedback that you guys give me tonight, which would be great. So on the RCA that I included, some of the topics were the phases that we're in at the library. And we've slowly been bringing people back in to work and then getting the people back in and getting circulation going. And it's been a very steady process. We have not ever had to step back, which is something that we've worked very hard at. So of the current services that we're providing right now, just going over September and October, because those two months, we've managed to keep the same exact schedule, which is open two days and three days of front door pickup and appointments. We've had 117 front door pickups and appointments. We've had our large meeting room reserved 19 different times from organizations, businesses, groups outside the library. The front desk work is being shared by everyone when we're in the building because it does take us a few more steps to do everything that we're doing. Our circulation for the year 2020, which has been quite the crazy year, is at about two-thirds where it is on a normal open year. And that's because of the, when we went closed in March, we went down and just had a few hundred books and materials that went out. And so we've been going so slowly up from that. We're at about, about two-thirds of the normal amount for the entire year. But on that same account, just to make a note of it, we have increased the number of patrons that we have at the library overall by 7%. 14% are temporary non-residents, so people from outside the school district or the other side of the river, which they're ones that would come in and pay for a card. So our library is being used by quite a few people. The fact that we are doing some programming is very much in an experimental stage. We've been trying to find out how much time it takes to do that because our program coordinator and myself are sharing a lot of the responsibilities that we can still provide after not having the public service librarian position filled. And we're struggling with the fact that with our program coordinator who was hired full-time to be able to provide programs in the library, now a lot of it's being done remotely. We're slowly experimenting, trying to get people back in small groups into the library. And our patrons are excited. The difficulty we're having is that we can't get our staff to do double duty on that. This evening, we're having a program that's live with our patrons and our program coordinator is having to put in comp time to be able to provide this program for our patrons. The, as far as our building goes, we are prepared to have people in it. We've been very cautious. We've communicated with the public health nurse to help us make sure that this is a safe environment for everyone who enters. And then I did list on the RCA about our staffing where we do have three full-time staff right now. One is home partially because of health reasons. Our program aide, the person who's supported our program, had her last day today. So that's 24 hours of program support we no longer have. Hopefully, we can fill those positions. The library board has agreed to fill two part-time positions, which will be, which have been empty. And we have one position right now that has gone from 20 to 10 because of schooling and another one that's gone from 20 to six hours a week. So we're still open with not having the entire staff filled. And because of the prep time for programming, there, we can't go any further than we are right now. We are in phase three and to do more, we'd have to have our full staff. There's a lot of really great things that we're doing at the library that I can tell you about, and there are a lot of things that we'd like to plan to do. Just to give you an idea of the things that we could do with the right staff, we used to do a Tinker Town where we'd get all, get elementary kids, K through five, in to do something scientific, something mechanical, something electronic. We'd like to provide that by supplying all of the pieces they need to do it, have them pick them up at the library and provide the online directions to do those kinds of things. Parents and teachers enjoyed that. We don't have the time to put it together right now. We used to have volunteers do dial-a-story. We need help in organizing that and getting the time to provide the volunteers to be able to do that kind of a thing. We also have not been able to provide reading or little programs for the school district, which we used to go into the buildings to do that. We can't do that anymore now, but we could work with the classes and the teachers and do that. We also are not able to do those kinds of things. So the difficulties we're running into right now is that we've reached our peak as to everything that we can possibly do. And we feel like we've done it really well. And it's been a great experience to find out just exactly how much that public service librarian position actually accomplished in the building. And to move forward into winter and to provide programming, we really need to fill that position. We can't ask a part-time person who is, you know, usually a beginner employee, oftentimes high school students, college students, to do some of these more technical types of programming. And we will gladly use them as aides and support, but we need them also at the front desk and doing the front door pickup and working with our quarantine materials, always takes many more steps than it used to and a lot more time. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Charlotte, to move into phase four, are there any equipment or supplies that you need to buy that qualify for CARES funding? I see you've got like recording, online meeting equipment with CARES funding. Has that stuff already been bought?
Yes, we have, we have the equipment from the CARES funding. We set up the virtual recording area so that we can work with that with our staff and if the public comes in to reserve that area. We also have the germ guards up along the 16-foot circulation desk that we have. And we have a mobile circulation station in our quarantine room so that the materials can be quarantined, cleaned, checked in, resensitized, and then brought out to be put back on the shelf.
Thank you. Andrew, do you have something? Sorry. Oh, I thought you had your hand raised there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Charlotte right now?
I guess if I was going to say anything, the library's been active through this whole time. Charlotte has kept me updated. I've gotten several emails from her, all through this spaced out by two or three or four weeks in between. And I am really proud of the work that they've done, somehow keeping that continuity for their patrons, for our residents, and done it in a very professional way. They've done it in a, in a way that I think a lot of people around the region look and say, nicely done. And so I do want to congratulate you, your staff, your board, and the guidance that you've received. And you're one of those people I thought of also when I talked about. Our department heads are true professionals. They're connected through associations to best practices outside the region. And you have really demonstrated that also, Charlotte. So thank you to you and all of your people.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Ms. Trumps.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's, there's a big vital part to the library nowadays with the situation we're in. People can't go other places and do other things. They're stuck at home, so of course, they're using the library more and more. So that's what's putting the big strain on the employees and everything because she's lost a couple and some open spots, and we never filled that one. And so that's why we're kind of, we're looking that we're going to have to do something there to continue to provide that service. That's probably one of the nicest buildings in East Grand Forks and they keep it up well and they do a good job over there. So I think we need to step up and support.
Anybody else have anything? I see none. Thanks, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Move on to number four, request to install radiant heat at Blue Line Arena. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. So through the public input phase of the arena planning that we worked on, there was one kind of common comment from people respondents in regard to the Blue Line Arena, asking us to find a way to add a heat source to it. So we've reviewed that with JLD a little bit and then even Midwest Refrigeration that put in the ice plant in that building to see what sort of heat source could be added that would allow the refrigeration plant to still work as it was designed to. And settled on this radiant heat system, one in which it would not be on 24 hours a day and essentially be on a timer or a dialed system that would allow for a quick source of heat over top of a spectator's or player's bench area when it was called for. Got them on a timer or a dialed setting similar to like a hotel hot tub is what we had pictured it being set up like. So either our staff or even potentially, depending upon where the switch could be located, spectators would be able just to turn it on when they're in the building for a game. And so I've got prices from both Johnson Controls and Lonsdale Plumbing and Heating to be able to do the install on that. They have their people come out and size up the space and suggest the heating systems that would, would be most appropriate for the size of space. And then ultimately asked the Blue Line Club if they would be interested in funding that project. And they chose at their meeting last week, they approved that they would be willing to do so if you guys would approve it to be put into the building. So the low price is from Johnson Controls for $28,200 to do that work. They have been gracious enough to donate some of their time as well, knowing that the Blue Line Club was looking at donating the, the cost of the install. So just looking for approval from all of you to be able to move forward with that project. If we move forward, it would likely be sometime this winter still that the install could take place.
Anybody have anything for Reed? See none, sir. Oh, Mayor, hang on a second.
He did prepare. We chatted earlier in the day, operational cost of 150 to 250 a month, so it's not going to break the bank in utility cost. Thanks for providing that, Reed.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking.
Anything else? See none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Request a lift station pump repair, Mr. Stortall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have three different lift stations after annual pump inspection that need some repairs. They need impellers installed. I got a couple of different estimates from Minnesota Pump Works and Wisconsin Pump Works. A little bid was Minnesota Pump Works. We do have the funds in our wastewater fund to go ahead and make the repairs and then asking for approval to do so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stortall?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeMurs.
Thank you. Mr. Stortall, what's the, the story on the lift station impellers?
They.
I mean, it seems.
Normal wear and tear.
How old is that pump?
You know, I don't have my stuff with me right now, Mark, but the pumps in lift one and the interconnect filter all the, all the wastewater from the city through them. So that, so there's a lot of wear and tear with them. Lift station number five pumps are not that old. They see a lot of, a lot of debris from the potato warehouses and such like that that we're trying to get a hold on. But yeah, yeah, those ones, I guess lift five probably sees the most wear and tear as far as debris and material through them. The other two are just, just because, just because of the flow. Some of the interconnect stuff probably has to do with the debris and stuff that came out of the EQ basin since we've had high, high water years with the river and a lot of ionized. So we had it backed up in there and we didn't have a lot of vegetation established. So some of that's due to that too, but, but just comes down to a lot of wear and tear. You'll notice a little bit of a price difference too in the, in the impellers. Some offer hardened versions, some don't. We went with the hardened version where we could because they're cheaper and they do a lot, they do hold up pretty good and you can buy about four or five of them for the cost of the others. So where we could, we use those and we're going to continue trying to work on that EQ basin, make sure that, you know, we get some good growth in there and we don't have the material coming in. We're also working on a way to, you know, filter out some of that material before it gets to lift station number five. So those are things we'll be working on in the future.
Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Move. Move by Vedder. Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting's adjourned. I'm going to go right into the special meeting. So I'll call, order the county, special meeting for the City Council, CDV's Grand First, Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 at 6:08. City Clerk, please call roll.
Here.
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 President.
Does term quorum. Number one, consider proving a check register for the approval of grant applicants for round one of the COVID business grant program. Move. Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Questions or discussion? Mayor.
This is not specific to round one, but this is the golden opportunity to put this out. A lot of work went into this. A lot of work went into putting together the application, circulating it, receiving it, combing through all of the applications, weeding out non-qualifying kinds of purchases. It's a little awkward to go back to those companies and say, we don't pay for Hershey chocolate nuggets as part of your COVID dollars. And yet, that was exactly what had to be done and it was mostly, I'm sure, oversight on the part of these businesses. So I want to just say thank you to everybody that's been involved. As you can imagine, it does sort of tax our systems a little bit. We don't do this every day. We don't, have never done anything quite like this ever. And so even though, and just for the record, President Olsted and I visited about this earlier in the day as well. I think about communicating with my wife, and I know exactly what I said, but do you think we connected? Do you think she caught the meaning of what? but do you think we connected? Do you think she caught the meaning of what I was trying to say? No. Well, the same thing happens in something like this. We gather as a, as a work group to discuss it. We talk about our plans of how we're going to carry it out. We give responsibilities to individuals. And yet, human communication is always ambiguous. You can always have, you know, two people take two different meanings out of that meeting, and, and you can speak as clearly as possible. So I know there was some stress and a little bit of strain as we came through this. And I would just challenge us, as we prepare for round two, to really try to sit down one more time and clarify the roles of each individual in the process. And, and it's going to be another wild card because we're bringing in some accounting services to do a part of it. They're not part of us, we're not part of them, but we're going to utilize their services to get this done. And so, again, I just, I'd say thank you, Paul, for overseeing the whole process, David, to try to coordinate what's going on every which way. Carla, the financial detail that you bring is very, very important. And the role that you have, it's going to be essential that we've created the right paper trail to go back up to document what we've done. And so the EDA board, Mike Pachivinsky, everybody stepped up and done so much to get this to where it is right now. But it is going to require, I think, before we hit the next phase, that we sit down and, and really talk about each role one more time, who does what, and, you know, thus far and no further for each one of us. And I believe it's all going to have to funnel back through Paul, and Paul reports, of course, on the staff level to David. And I think we do want to just, again, clean that up, get some clarification on who's doing what, and hopefully avoid a little bit of friction that inevitably results.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? If not, do roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move by Grassel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting's adjourned.